Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. Welcome to the Monday, April eighth, ninth, uh, twenty twenty four, meeting of the Grafton Planning Board. Uh, we'll start by.
We'll call you.
Mr. Davidson.
Present.
Mr. Robbins.
Present.
I am here. Mr. Van Katramen. Fabu?
Fabu? Hello? We may have lost Perbu.
Oh. Sorry. We were on. Can you hear me now? Yes.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay.
All right, and then we are missing our associate member right now. Ms. President Hand is not present, and then staff, we do not have our town planner, but we do have the office manager and Natalia Alward.
Present.
That's, uh, everybody we need to talk about. Okay. Oh. Jim, do you want to say anything?
We can do it when we get to the correspondence.
Okay.
Since they do appear in the correspondence.
Yeah, well, but you know, it's announcement. Okay, um, this is where we come to, uh, our item, public input. This is where someone can talk to us about something within our purview, uh, that's not otherwise on the agenda tonight. Is there anyone in the room or on the web who wants to speak to us on public input? Apparently not.
We have no hands on Zoom. No attendees on Zoom.
Uh, well, you have.
But we do have people on the panelists on Zoom.
Yes.
Who would be eligible to put something in as public input if they want to.
Yes. Um, okay, the first item on the agenda is request to withdraw without prejudice. Uh, we're gonna cover that when we get to the hearing, the continuation of the hearing on that, uh, that they are looking to withdraw from. Draft decision on, uh, the request for modification of definitive plan, the writings, eighty-eight Adams Road. We have a, we have a draft decision, and I believe it reflects the one year that we, discussed.
Does. You'll see that in condition C one.
Yeah. Does anybody have anything to talk about before we consider action? If not.
I will move that the board find favorably and approve the modification with the conditions as all as drafted in the draft decision.
Second.
Moved in second. Is there a dis- any discussion? Hearing none.
All right, Mr. Davidson.
Aye.
Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
I vote aye. Mr. Van Katramen.
Aye.
And Mr. Hassenger.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, the next is, uh, under discussion items. Open space parcel prioritization project follow-up. I'm guessing you're the one.
Yes, and I, I have a, I think a fairly brief, hopefully a fairly brief presentation. Be happy to answer any questions. There was a lot of material posted in the meeting materials, and I have no intention of trying to go through all of that, but if anybody has read something and wants to ask about it, I'll try to answer it.
Who is the approving authority?
I don't know that there is technically an approving authority. This project is going to be, um, presented to the select board in May. But I don't know that any formal approval was ever actually necessary. But this project.
Does that have something to do with what weight it carries? How it applies?
Yeah, so anyway, so here's open space parcel prioritization project. Little bit of background and a brief summary of what it is. It is basically a response to one action item in the twenty twenty open space and recreation plan. The action item text, as you can see here, was to develop a priority list of parcels for immediate and future acquisition of land to expand and connect existing, existing resources based on risk proximity to existing resources and other factors. So, how we went about, and this basically was initiated by the Open Space and Recreation Committee as part of, you know, implementation of the Open Space and Recreation Plan. Uh, we engaged Central Mass Regional Planning to develop a methodology for evaluating parcels, for prioritizing them for potential acquisition, or really it's potential, it could be acquisition by the town, it could be other forms of permanent protection, all based on criteria of significance for open space and recreation purposes. You know, and in addition, after developing the methodology, CMRPC then produced some tables and maps showing the result of applying the methodology to a number of parcels of land in the town. And just to emphasize, this is intended to assist the town in future consideration of property acquisition or protection. It's not the sole factor in any such consideration, and it's not a commitment by the town, does not represent any commitment by the town to undertake any particular acquisition or protection of any of the parcels that might have been evaluated as part of this project. So, next question is what parcels did we analyze? There are somewhere over six thousand total parcels of land in the town, and this project, you know, went through and evaluated and selected for evaluation, sort of the obvious, a chapter sixty-one, sixty-one A, sixty-one B land, uh, because these are parcels that the town may potentially have an opportunity to acquire by right of first refusal under chapter sixty-one. In addition, the, the analysis selected for, uh, all vacant land, that is land that the assessor has classified as vacant, as, you know, potentially any vacant land could conceivably be a candidate for some form of protection for open space purposes. They also selected land that contained structures or objects listed in the National Register of Historic Places. You know, these are maybe not obviously open space specific, but they are, could be candidates for historic preservation restrictions. Uh, we also looked at all unprotected open space that was listed in the Open Space and Recreation Plan Inventory of Open Space. Some of these are subdivision open space that's not yet been protected. Some of these are town-owned land that's categorized as open space, but is not permanently protected. Finally, they looked at, uh, residentially zoned parcels of ten acres or more. And the reason for inclusion of that, as best as I can remember, is that land that might, might someday be subdivided in the future may include open space that would be a candidate for protection, which we do, rather customarily, we, we expect subdivisions to include open space. Uh, and just a note on this, uh, there are quite a number of parcels of land that are already permanently protected. They were not included in this analysis for perhaps obvious reasons. We already, we already have them protected. And with these parcels of land that this methodology evaluated, uh, we ended up with twelve scoring criteria. Four, the four primary scoring criteria were, uh, proximity to existing permanently protected open space. This prioritizes, sort of obviously prioritizes connection to existing open space. Uh, another one was endangered wildlife habitat on or nearby the parcel. Again, that prioritizes protection of habitat. Third category was environmental protection potential, uh, prioritizing protection of ecosystems. And here, there's a little bit of detail on this slide, which I won't read every word of it, but there's basically two, two sets of data that Mass GIS has that kind of cover this. One is biomap, which is subdivided into core habitat and critical natural landscape, and there are wetlands that the state has mapped. And the, the, the fourth primary score, scoring criterion was proximity to wellhead protection areas, basically zone two, uh, which sort of obviously prioritizes protection of water supply. These, these four criteria give it given the most weight in scoring. Secondary scoring criteria, uh, prioritizing contiguous open space regardless of protection status, prioritizing trail connections, connection to town resources in general, and historic preservation, again, proximity to unpredicted open space, access to trails, according to the trails data that CMRPC had, uh, proximity to town-owned land other than open space and containing registered historic features. And thirdly, some relatively minor scoring criteria, but nevertheless thought to be worthwhile, taking into account access to public parking, access to roads, proximity to public access easements. All three basically are prioritizing potential public access to the parcel. And lastly, there is development potential, which basically is a measure of how much of the parcel is potentially developable, developable, i.e. not covered by a water body, not in a flood zone, not in the river protection buffer area, and not having excessively steep slopes. And the reason for thinking about this at all seems to be, uh, with greater development potential for a parcel that otherwise scores pretty highly, uh, the greater development potential could make protecting its open space a slightly higher priority. So, without getting into all the scoring details, which you can read about in gory detail and in some of the other documents, this is basically how they went about calculating scores for the project, for the parcels. The results are primarily contained in an Excel workbook, which contains one, one worksheet with the details of scoring criterias, a worksheet with a table of every one of the, I believe it was nine hundred and fifty-eight parcels. Some of them actually have multiple rows on that table because they have multiple assessor records, but nine hundred and fifty-eight distinct parcels of land. The spreadsheet shows you all the scoring inputs and the score calculations, and ends up with a final score. The workbook also includes some pivot tables that summarize the data, the data in some interesting ways, and they produced a map, which, if you look at it in large enough size, you know, you can kind of see some stuff on the map. It may or may not be easy to, uh, you know, easy to relate to, uh, right away. So, with these, here's just an example of, you know, I'm not, I'm not, I, I didn't think it would be useful to, to try to display nine hundred and fifty-eight rows of a table on a screen here. But this is the top fifteen, the top fifteen scores, and just, you know, where the parcels are. The maximum possible score here is twenty-four, and so the top fifteen scores, there's actually a tie for number fifteen, so there are actually seventeen rows on here. But, uh, some of these, it may look familiar. Twenty-one Flut Street is a parcel that we spent a fair amount of time discussing on this board not too long ago. It's already owned by the town, but it's not permanently protected, which is why it's included in this analysis. Twenty-three Rear East Street is Hayes Pond. Fifteen Sunnyside Terrace Rear is Fisherville Pond, except a lot of it is dry at the moment, but hopefully with the, eventually the dam will be restored and Fisherville Pond will be restored to its former glory. Just as, and I'm not going to go through all these, just it, it's interesting to see what some of these parcels actually are. The map, I don't expect anyone to read this map on the screen here. Uh, this is the map that Central Mass Regional Planning produced, and it's, they've highlighted in green the existing protected open space, and in various colors, the low scoring to the high scoring parcels. The yellow is the low scores, or light orange is the next group of scores, and each one of those two groups are about three hundred parcels in each one. The darker orange, I think there may be a little, a little under three hundred parcels there, are the, and then the, the top score, the top group of scores is from thirteen point seven five up to twenty-one point two five. If I remember right, there are forty-eight parcels in that range of scores. So the division into the different groups is somewhat arbitrary, but it gives you a sense of where the, where the low and the high scoring parcels are. And what do we do with this, what we have? Um, from the data produced by this project, aside from reading it and, you know, applying it to any potential question about any particular parcel, we can also extract and summarize the data in a number of ways. The pivot table examples that they, they included in the worksheet are, you know, show some of the possible ways to extract and summarize the data, but we could easily do others. And we can produce additional maps. We've got a couple of examples in the next page of the kinds of maps that we can produce with this. Fiona is currently talking with our GIS vendor about incorporating this data somehow into the town's GIS, which I, I played around with a lot on my GS app, GIS app at home, but not everybody's gonna have a GIS app on their computer, so. Doing, getting this onto the town's GIS website will be, if we can find some good ways to do that, would be helpful. Just a couple of the maps that I've produced, on the left here is a map of just the top fifteen parcels. Uh, in a more readable version of the map, I've labeled the parcels with their address, so. And, and I, I questioned whether pink is the best color for top fifteen, but that's the color my GIS app produced, and I just went with it. I've, the, the, on the right is the, the top ten chapter land parcels. I've been debatable whether yellow is the right color for them, but it kind of shows you where they are on a map, and for some of us, it's, it's easier to see these things on a map and relate them to, you know, whatever we might be interested in. And I think this last slide here is just to speculate about future updates to this data. I mean, this is not necessarily a one and done, although it could be. Um, but the way the Excel workbook is constructed, we could actually change the formulas for calculating the scores if we, if we decided that after, after further review and study, we decided maybe the scoring isn't coming out quite the way we expected it to. I mean, so far as I've looked at it, at least, it seems to make sense, but until you really start using the data, you, you know, you might find that we can, we want to assign different weights or different values to the scores, or combine them in different ways. So the, the work, the Excel workbook is sort of set up to allow some adjustments there. In addition, we could, uh, we could take a step back in the process and, uh, consider some revisions to the methodology involved in, in, uh, applying GIS to analyze various attributes of the parcels. Selecting the parcels to be analyzed, maybe we missed some that really should have been included. Maybe we, maybe instead of a quarter mile distance from something, we want to go with a third of a mile or a half a mile. These, you know, these things all can be done too, but that, that, that requires going back and doing the work in the GIS, which we would probably consider engaging CMRPC to do. I have a lot of the data, but not all of it, so I can reproduce some of the GIS work, but somebody, myself or someone else with GIS expertise could also, you know, look at doing some of that work, but that's, if we identify a need, we can go back and adapt the methodology as we see, as we see a need to. So that's basically all that I wanted to say about this, but again, any, any questions or comments?
Um, as much as I've, I've captured, um, this is pretty much numbers, um, hard numbers and, and formulas. There, I didn't catch any real judgmental thing, you know? This is important because, you know, because it's wonderful, or, you know, whatever. Is that true?
To an extent. I mean, the, the, the analysis here that produced the numbers, you know, attempts to capture in numbers some, some things that are important. For example, proximity to existing particular open space. So, so we, you know, that, we, there is some judgment involved in coming up with the numbers and combining them. Uh, so to the extent that, to the extent that useful judgments are reasonably fairly represented in the methodology.
Yeah, I know.
It goes that far, but there are, there are probably some non-numerical judgments that really difficult, if not impossible, to make in a methodology like this.
That'll be an interesting part of this when we come to talk about acquisitions or, or whatever. Um, people, people with less mathematical orientation will, um, have conversation about it.
Well, that's why we say it's, this is not intended to be the sole factor in any consideration.
Of course. But that's a pretty good job. Anybody else?
Yeah, when we started out in this, I was, I was curious as to what sort of methodology they were gonna come up with, because I, I, I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have really known how to approach this.
Okay, so this is basically CMRPC's methodology put forward. Have they used it elsewhere?
Not to my knowledge. I think, I think we were told that they've done some, something similar, but not exactly. And they did, you know, we did spend some of that, they did talk to us on the Open Space and Rec Committee as they were putting this together. They talked about the various, uh, scoring factors that they could conceivably, as various data that they had available, and we kind of, we kind of jointly, you know, zeroed in on the, the twelve scoring criteria that were used here.
Okay. Anybody else?
Nope.
If not, uh, bills.
My only comment on those before the motion is, these are bills for the UPS facility that's, looks like they're starting to move forward a little bit, just to call it out out loud, but it's not on the agenda to talk about any more than that, so I figured that.
We do not have an application. This is pre.
Yeah, pre-application. But I move we approve them, so I can pay them.
Moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none.
All right, Mr. Davidson.
Aye.
Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
I vote aye. Mr. Van Katramen.
Aye.
And Mr. Hassenger.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Brings us to, um, oh, minutes of previous meetings, except.
It's crossed out.
That's crossed out. I couldn't tell whether it was me that crossed it out. Which brings us to correspondence, and the first item freshly added to the correspondence, maybe you'd like to, uh, tell us about.
Yeah, um, so I, um, have an opportunity. Um, my in-laws needed, um, help kind of maintaining a property and renting out a property in Oxford, and, uh, they were generous enough to, to rent it out at pre-COVID prices, and it's about double the living space, and we have a growing family, so we decided that, uh, we'll take them up on the opportunity, which, uh, means that we'll be, uh, my fa- family will be moving out of Grafton, um, which means that, uh, I'll have to step down from the planning board, and, uh, we'll have to find a new, um, member to replace me here, but, um, just wanted to say thanks to everyone. It's been a, a great, I've been on the planning board for about a year. It's, I've had a great experience, um, working with everyone here and, uh, taking part in the meetings, and, uh, thanks to Natalia and Fiona and everyone has, has really made the process, uh, pretty smooth, so just wanted to say thanks to everyone.
Okay, I think Natalia's already advised the select board, and, uh, as soon as people feel it's appropriate, there'll be some sort of advertisements put out for, uh, an appointment. They'll be in the, we'll do an appointment, a joint appointment by the planning board and the select board. And that's, that, the term for that runs until the next election. This is late enough so that it can't be for the current election, so that'll be a term of about almost a year. Uh, and then at that point, if there's, I think there's still time left in the, in the,
A year left.
In the, in, in the seat, in, um, then they have, whoever fills it has to run for election.
For years.
So the oversea's gonna be posted on the town's website, and hopefully, once it's posted, we'll start getting some letters of interest from people. Um, the joint meeting between the select board and the planning board is tentatively scheduled for Tuesday, May twenty-eighth, so for the planning board members, can let me know your availability for that night. That would be good.
I don't know whether we should mention that should our associate apply and get appointed, then there'll be an opening for an associate, uh, which is appointed.
By the selection.
Pointed by, that's a joint appointment, isn't it?
If I remember correctly, yes.
It's been a while since we did one.
Yeah.
Uh, well, not that long. So then, that would be another opportunity, but that will, that, that, if those circumstances arise, then that appointment will be out of ways, and we'll be without an associate, uh, for a while.
So the more letters of interest we get, they can be.
Yeah, um.
The better.
I suppose that letters of interest could be sent back. Oh, well, are you interested in the associat-?
We'll have to figure out the logistics. We'll have to figure out the logistics, but thank you, Jim, for, for running for this board, and.
Yes.
We're doing the job.
Doing, doing a good job. Okay, do we have any, uh, reports, uh, from planning board representatives on town committees and CMRPC?
I have nothing new.
Other than your, what you just said.
Remind me, Jim, is there anything that you're on the board of?
Uh, I was with the, um, on the CMRPC.
Okay.
That was the only one.
We'll have to, uh, I think that's our appointment, that was our appointment.
Yeah, well, we redoing our, yeah, we redoing our assignments anyway after the may election, so that probably will line up.
Which is right around the same time.
Yeah.
May want to wait until after. No.
Yeah, but.
We'll have to see about the election results.
Our, our first meeting after the election will be June tenth.
Ah, all right, well, I, there's no, not.
It would, it would ordinarily be May twenty-seventh, but that is a holiday, and we typically don't meet on holidays.
Yeah, I think, uh, there are people who object to that.
Yes, in fact, our, our, our meeting schedule in May is off a little bit.
Um, well, I have a minute and a half before we can start hearings. Everyone relax for a minute. Because I don't think I have anything else except.
Let's see, we really don't do any other items which may lawfully come to, before the board until they end.
Yeah, well, if I knew that there was something, but.
We have adjourned on the agenda. I can adjourn. Probably not a good idea.
I can't hear you. The, the hearing.
I don't think the chair will allow that motion anyway.
Well, it won't reignite the motion until he thinks it's a good idea.
I just, I could remind you that the public hearing for the proposed zoning by law amendments is going to be at our next, um, April meeting on April twenty-second, just so that you're.
Public hearing, public hearings.
The zoning by law amendments, the articles for the town meeting. And Fiona will be next, back next week, so she'll give you a full staff report after that.
We can get back to full speed. I hope she's enjoying herself and doing well.
She better be.
Six.
Okay, that brings us to seven thirty, public hearings and meetings. Seven thirty, public hearings and meetings, the first item is. The um. Uh Farnhamville, Farnhamsville acre sixty one Maple Avenue hearing. Which has been open and continued for some time. There's been a question about withdrawing or how to withdraw. Apparently, we got a letter from the applicant. After the last time I looked through the uh.
Right, we received the letter today, he, uh, the applicant, Stephen David. He had sent an email today stating that he's not going to go forward with this project and he has no objection to having it withdrawn with prejudice. He stated he had no desire to appear before the board and this is his actual email here.
Okay, so. He's requesting to withdraw and he is not objecting to doing it with present.
My only comment briefly is just because we have a record of this hearing on the website, just to add that to the record at some point this week.
Oh, yes.
I know it's gonna be in the record in the office, but to have it in the record on the website.
Yeah, it should be, it should be here. Not, we don't know whether anybody will go back to it, but.
That says. Because we have the request to withdraw, I move that we grant the withdrawal request with prejudice. And we close the public hearing subsequently.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion?
Just sort of a comment, uh. I may have mentioned this before the meeting started, but there was some recent discussion on the planner's mailing list about withdrawing with prejudice and the. It was pointed out that withdrawing with prejudice is the equivalent, equivalent of a denial. And the suggestion was to use it with caution and make all the findings you might make for an actual denial. Not sure that that is essential in this case, since the, uh, the applicant has explicitly acknowledged that they would not. Object to a simple withdrawal with prejudice, so I think in this case, we probably don't need to make findings. If it was more, potentially more controversial, and then we would want to go to greater lengths to explain the withdrawal with prejudice.
I didn't get a chance to find it in forty A, I think it's in forty A. But as I recall, I, I'm not sure that the term with prejudice. Is particularly used, I think. It's withdrawn. And you can't come, come back uh for two years. You can ask for without prejudice so that that doesn't happen, so I think that's, that's fine.
Given, given the applicant's stated intent here.
So, was that a message, was that a?
It was a motion and I.
There was a motion and a, and a second. And I'm not asking to expand on the motion at all.
I, I do agree with what you said, and I will say this from my own opinion, is that we have the applicant's request to withdraw, which is enough in my mind, as well as the fact that the. The record of the application is incomplete as it sits. It would not be, you know, there's things that were necessary to be, to be changed back when we first continued the hearing. So that, I don't think there's gonna be any issue to do formal stuff.
Yeah, I guess so, so, anything else, any other discussion?
Implicitly, does the withdrawal implicitly close the public hearing?
The motion included, close the hearing.
Maybe, maybe if I'd actually listened carefully to every word of the motion.
As if I have, um, that was the motion and that was the second. Discussion.
All right, Mr. Davidson. Mr. Robbins. I vote aye, Mr. Veckatromen. And Mr. Hassender.
I vote aye, motion is carried unanimously. That brings us to fifty five North Main Street. This, the hearing is open, we received some material that we were looking for.
I'll dive right in as he's getting set up, if you don't mind, but good evening once again, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Attorney Matt Ekel with Fletcher Tilton here on behalf of Bellevanzi LLC. Uh, with me in the audience is Julie Bivenzi, the owner of the property and operative Truth Organic Spa and Wellness Center. And Rob Lassier from CMG Environmental. Uh, as you probably remember, we were here on March twenty fifth, we're following up on that presentation. Uh, we are seeking site plan approval as well as special permits relating to the proposed use. Uh, as well as the proposed reserved parking at fifty five North Main Street. To very briefly recap, Ms. Bivenzi operates a spa and wellness center at fifty five North Main Street. Um, the property was damaged in a fire and she is wishing to rebuild, uh, the. Rebuild the damaged building as well as return to her property while making improvements to the structure and the lot. Uh, as part of this, we're seeking to erect a uh small side addition as well as rear addition, which you can see highlighted there in the green. Uh, as well as make site improvements, including a more functional parking area and implementing new and improved landscaping. Overall, the lot's just under forty eight thousand square feet and the zoning district is a neighborhood business district. We front on North Main Street there, you can see where the curb cut is and the rear of the property abuts high street. Um, the existing structure, which again you can see highlighted in the yellow and the green, is located kind of on the far left side of the property. You can see down at the bottom, the, the proposed curb cut, uh, currently the curb cut extends uh least double that, if not a little bit more, it's kind of. Uh, a free for all to get in and out, and then the parking is a currently a, a gravel. Uh, unlined and really unorganized area, we're proposing to bring some more order to that. Uh, kind of chaotic environment as well as pave it over, line it, uh, and then we'd have the eight of reserve spaces. If and when that should be needed in the future, which is located far plan right. Uh, overall, the structure will contain just over eighty seven hundred square feet. Uh, as mentioned, we're gonna have eight additional spaces to be held in reserve if approved, we are proposing to. Uh, build out thirty nine parking spaces, which we feel will more than accommodate the proposed use. Uh, we're also proposing significant improvements to the drainage as well as improved planting and landscaping. Uh, which if requested, we can certainly walk through that in greater detail. Uh, we feel overall this project will bring back this property that's currently distressed. And allow Ms. Bivenzi to better serve her clientele as well as providing some more ADA accommodations. And uh a more efficient and safe parking area. Following our last hearing on the twenty fifth, we did receive peer review comments from Graves Engineering. Uh, as well as additional feedback from Ms. Coughlin and the Fire Department. We did provide a written response which addressed all of that feedback as well as updates to the plan uh in association with that feedback. Uh, we're happy to take any questions or comments that still exist or any new questions or comments based upon our responses at this time.
Any idea how long it's gonna take before it's open?
I know the stated goal is Christmas. Of this year, that's the dream.
The way this stuff goes.
Understood, but uh that's, that's kind of the best case projection right now.
Agreed, yeah.
Good, well, any questions up here?
Are there any open issues at this point? By and large, from your response to the peer review, it looks like everything is pretty much been addressed.
Yeah, I, with the peer review, there were really two, I don't wanna call them big items, but really it was the landscape plan. The base that needs to be revised, cause we had the old layout on there, so that was updated and then. Um, I know Jeff Walsh also commented on a stray contour line that just needed to be added, so pretty minor in nature.
There was something about uh waving two inch caliper or one and a half inch caliper trees.
Correct, so the one and a half inch caliper trees, that's for the street trees along the front of the site. I'll get to it, but those are flowering dogwoods, so our landscape architect essentially stated that. If you go up to two inches with those, it takes a, it's a little bit of a gamble because. With those flowering trees, since they're not shade trees, they just don't always survive, so. He mentioned it would, oh, I can see you pulling up the plans now, so he mentioned that if you went with the one and a half inch, you're. They're more likely to survive than the two inch and they're gonna grow faster, that's the reason why now. If the town doesn't want to waive that, I mean, we can show the two inch caliper. You know, or make it a condition of approval perhaps, but um. That was the reasoning behind the one and a half inch caliper request.
I didn't get to drill down that far on the plan, how far from the street and sidewalk are the trees?
I believe they're ten feet off.
Okay, that, that's, that's, they're not right up there.
No, no, because there's a bit of an offset.
Reminds me of something we added to the rules or, or an addendum, not, not a rule necessarily. Many years ago about. Plantings that survive well along roads and those that don't. And I, I don't remember where dogwoods fall.
Yeah, you're not gonna want them to be too close to the street getting.
But, but you think they'll be okay where, where you're talking about putting them?
Yeah, because right now, the edge of the street line is right around where I'm pointing here. That's about fifteen feet from that street line, because there is a pretty significant shoulder along the road here. So, and we obviously can't be planting in the right way, so fifteen feet should be plenty.
Well, I think that'll be nice. Anybody else have any questions? Does anyone in the audience, either on the uh web or in the room, have anything they wanna say on this?
We have no hands raised on Zoom, no hands raised in the audience.
I think we've got everything as far as I can tell.
Things there is, I think we're ending up with, there is the waiver we just talked about, there were some other waivers too requested. Routines to filing.
I thought that the uh, the, the engineer's report contains various things that Fiona will have to.
There were some, you know, there were some, you know, details for the decision, and there was the uh, the, the soil testing, for example, that was something that.
Yep, that was actually.
We expect that, I think we're expecting that to be in a, as a condition.
Absolutely, and that's very standard too nowadays to make sure that the uh, the stormwater systems function.
I think, as I read through, I thought that everything was there for, for her to.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think we're at this point waiting for any additional information.
No, and I would say even if the board wasn't happy with the one point five, you know, the one and a half trees. We could always do that condition, I, I'm personally not worried about it, but that's the.
I don't know who we'd ask.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I, I would generally.
West of nursery.
I would generally uh acknowledge the uh expertise of a landscape designer and someone who. Has expertise in that particular area.
Given them, I have absolutely none, and I'll bet you even my wife, uh, who's at home, but probably not watching. Who used to be out there. I don't, we have a, we have a kusa uh outside our bedroom, I don't know how, but it's, it's. Hundred feet from the road, um, but they're, they can be very nice. Okay, um.
I would say. Given that we seem to reach a consensus that we're not waiting for any additional information, I would move to close the public hearing. And direct staff to draft a decision for our consideration at a future meeting.
Moved in second, is there any discussion? Any discussion?
All right, Mr. Davidson. Mr. Robbins. I vote aye, Mr. Veckatromen.
Aye.
And Mr. Hassender.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. As soon as she can, she'll get on the decision, I'm not sure exa- cause she's away yet, yet.
I'm, I'm pretty sure no work on the decision, decision will be done this week.
I'm sure of that, but she might have other things also when she gets back, so I'm not sure exactly what the schedule will be.
We'll have a meeting on the twenty second.
We'll have a, we'll have a, a draft at some point and you can communicate with. With the staff about what's going on and, you know, take a look. Okay.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
That leaves me with one more item. Which is a continued.
New hearing.
It's a new hearing.
It's a, a public meeting, it's not yet.
It's a public meeting. We'll do the same thing.
All right, the Grafton Planning Board will hold a public meeting on Monday, April eighth, twenty twenty four. Commencing at seven thirty PM in conference room A at the Grafton Memorial Municipal Center, thirty Providence Road, Grafton, Mass. To consider an application for project plan review for Coming School of Veterinary Medicine at Tufts University. Pursuant to section nine dot six dot one dot two of the Grafton zoning bylaw for the installment of one temporary rounds room building. Located on the parking lot adjacent to the Henry and Louis Foster Hospital for Small Animals on property located at fifty five Woollett Street. Shown as Grafton Assessors Map twenty one lot one A, said property is located in an office light indu- industry. OLI and campus development overlay CDO zoning district. The applicant is trustees of Tufts College, AKA Tufts University, and the owner is Tufts University trustees. Copies of the application and plan are available for public inspection at the planning department during regular business hours. Or on the town of Grafton website at www dot grafton dash MA dot gov, on the planning department development products webpage.
Do we have someone to address?
Uh, Ruth Bennett should be here. So just if I may make a note, um, we do not have the check yet for the engineering peer review. So that's, should be any minute, once we do that, they will be notified to proceed, so we still, we will be expecting that document.
Okay, well, thank you, um, my name's Alister Kirby, I'm the dean at Coming School of Veterinary Medicine and um. This is Ruthie Bennett, our uh.
Director of.
Director of Campbell Planning, yeah, Tufts University and, and Greg Connor, who is the architect and um brought the drawings and. Just, I'll give you the brief background of what we're, what we're doing, which is that um. Basically demand for both our client services in the hospital and our students are up and the buildings are basically overflowing. With people in spaces, not a space for the students to do what we call rounds, which is they had a case, they've worked with the faculty. And they actually have to discuss it and make sure that they've learned the material they're supposed to do. And so as things are filled up, we have people not rounding in proper locations and so. We are planning long term, you know more about it, expansions of the building itself. Um, but now what we need to do is bring in some temporary space just to allow the students a place to go and gather and work and discuss. With the faculty that's not basically right where all that is happening in the hospital. And so these are two rooms are joined together, so basically it's one, um, one building. And they occupy uh six uh slots in our uh parking, so parking's there. And the main hospital is sort of the square there on the left. Um, you know, no one likes to lose parking spots, but we need a place to put them and that is client only parking. Uh, and it's not a permanent structure, it's just temporary till we can bring um more permanent plants to you, but we're just pressed for space. And they're fairly common, um, you know, temporary office trailers type space that you can get.
Are you looking to. Sometime not too far out, build a. Permanent space?
Yeah, we are, and so, um, you know, we submitted our seven year, we do a seven year submission of a campus master plan. And right now we have um, um, an outside architect company that's doing a overall spatial plan of the campus. To figure out where we should actually put the buildings, we just had another meeting today. Uh, and I can tell you it's all aligning up pretty close with what you saw in our campus master plan that was submitted. But yeah, there will be some other new buildings proposed and this will kind of end up being about a ten to fifteen year. Project of temporary things, so it'll be expansion of the hospitals, some new classrooms. Um, as programs grow on that campus.
I, I had a little trouble, um, uh, looking at this stuff on the computer is very difficult, you know. But I had a little trouble fully orienting myself uh with those drawings, I think I finally did figure it out.
Right, so it, just to kind of orient you, you know where the, if you go to the hospital, you see the big glass front.
Yep.
So this is a parking lot just to the left, is where all the clients go and park. So if you were, if you went up Willard, it's on your left, just as you, you go past the big red barn, there's parking lot in front of that. Which is not what we're talking about here, then there's a small animal clinic at the Foster Hospital with a parking lot there. And if you're driving along Route thirty to Westboro, it's just on your right before you hit Willard Street.
No, I, I, but, um.
A bit removed from the road, so.
Yeah, it's not right near the road.
I sort of thought that it was pretty close to the, the large animal park.
Yeah, so.
Cause it's, it's more east, or it's towards the east side of the complex.
Right, the, the big new glass entry is here. This is actually entry into large animal on this end of the building, so you're correct.
Right.
Yeah, so it's, it's in the small animal parking lot, but it's that sort of fence that you've shown there is the fence that separates the large and the small animal parking area.
Is this, does this, it, not that it matters at all, I'm just curious. Does this end up being one big room inside?
It's split in two, actually.
Two.
With a door between the two, so you can get from one.
With what, like desks in there?
Just a table.
Yeah, basically, basically a center table with chairs around, so they sit around and they, much like we're doing here, but they talk about sick animals. Pretty much.
Not just animals, but people too, I, you hear rounds and I guess, I guess if you see pictures of. Those medical students actually going around on, uh, to, to patients, but.
Yeah.
More, more it seems like when you hear of rounds, they're sitting, talking.
Yeah.
Not going around.
And, and we do both, we do both, so they walk around, but this is that part where they just have to sit down and it's really not.
Right.
You need to pay attention, this animal is sick right now, that's what you need to do, it's the, the more in-depth discussions.
So, so I do see on the narrative, it says duration temporary for three to five years. Is this all season?
Yeah, yeah. You get the pleasure of walking across in the snow.
Is there expected to be any supplement in like heating or, you know, stuff in there, is that?
Yeah, air conditioning in the summer, heating in the winter.
Yes.
Yeah.
Generator or just plugged into the, I mean, wired to the main building, I'm assuming? Okay.
Doesn't have restroom, effort goal?
No, we, we have an accessible route that gets us to the, the main hospital building that's within the three hundred foot limit that's in the code for access.
Is the ex, s, you said there's a door between the two halves and the one half has the ramp.
Correct.
Um, so. If, if you had an accessible situation and they were in the other room, they could go through.
Yes.
You know.
Reality is more likely, we would just say to those that are on the accessible side, you gotta go over there. You know, but yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, well, it depends on what group they're.
Yeah.
What was the other thing?
I was actually there on Monday, my cat has an issue with eating foam.
Not a good one, yeah.
But they, they do incredible work there, I mean, they have the, uh, the students, uh, come out, they take the notes, they, they come back, you have the doctors come out, it's, it's really. You know, remarkable the amount of work that, the, the type of work that they do there.
We had our golden retriever over there not long ago. For rather serious situation, surgery and whatnot and, uh. He seems to be much happier now.
So that's good, good, was it his legs or?
Internal.
Internal, okay. Not common, it's, it's not uncommon for dogs to get cruciate ligaments, just like athletes do and they get surgery to fix that. No, it's internal, okay.
I guess.
Other than receiving the check and making sure that's all set, is there anything this board needs further for this hearing?
I think that's just for peer review, right?
We, we need to have.
That's for peer review.
The review, that the check will allow us to get.
So, so basically, at this point, we're waiting for the peer review.
Okay, I thought I read it, but maybe I was imagining it.
No.
So, yeah, other, other than, yeah, we, you know, we'll obviously have to, uh, punt this to the. Next meeting to get the peer review done.
Yeah, so.
Peer review responsive, if we can hopefully get it for the next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, and.
I heard something about our peer, uh, being very busy.
What's that?
Our, our peers, our peer reviewer, um, has, has been snowed under. But anyway, there's a form here that you can request a continuation of the hearing.
Okay.
And, yeah. Our next meeting, as we said, is the twenty second of April and then after that, just to.
I think we're looking at the first Monday in May.
Yeah, the first Monday in May the sixth and.
It'll, it'll be a little tight, but we could, you know, you can come, um, in two weeks and.
Yeah, and even if.
The peer review isn't finished, you have to come back again or you can just.
Yeah, you could always send an email to staff too and just say, well, we don't have the peer review yet, so we're going to ask for another continuance if, till the. Then we'd take it up at our meeting that night.
I'm, I'm just traveling back from Philadelphia on the twenty second, so if I came, it would be by Zoom from the car properly. So depending on the flight landing in Boston on time, um, but I'll make myself available in case there's other questions.
Okay.
Yep, and we'll see, yeah.
Okay.
Optimistically, will the peer review will be done before then and we can wrap things up.
Yeah.
So you want the twenty second?
Yeah.
I'll just need you to, to finish.
I move that we grant the applicant's written request to continue the hearing until Monday, April twenty second at seven thirty PM.
Second.
Moved in second, discussion, hearing done.
Since it's not a hearing.
Oh, meeting.
Motion should be to continue the meeting.
Yes, correction, meeting, not hearing.
Yeah, second. I'm not even sure whether, well, anyway.
Anyway.
We can be really picky with words we use.
Yeah, Mr. Davidson?
Aye.
Mr. Robbins?
Aye.
I vote aye, Mr. Veckatraman.
Aye.
And Mr. Hassener.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Is there anything else which may lawfully come before us?
Only a comment that probably missed a great opportunity to use a eclipse as its background instead of the San Francisco Bridge.
I don't know.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
It's looking west towards the sunset. Okay, um.
I move your turn.
Second.
Moved in second and it's not debatable.
All right, Mr. Davidson.
Aye.
Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
I vote aye, Mr. Veckatraman.
Aye.
And Mr. Hassener.
I vote aye, motion carries unanimously as they all.
Good folks.
Good night.